Meeting is live, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the study session of the Planning Commission for City of San Clemente Wednesday, July 21st. We don't normally do it, but Cecilia, we have roll call on the agenda. Please call roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Camp.
Present.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Chair Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner McCocken.
Here.
Commissioner McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott.
Here.
And Vice Chair Tyler.
Here.
Thank you very much. And just a quick heads up. If I don't call on anyone to speak and you want to speak, please give your name before you start speaking so the recording secretary knows whose comments are being made. It's awfully hard to tell on the video. We have a study session that's going to be led by Mal Richardson from Best Best and Krieger on some things that those that know Planning Commissions should know, but will be refreshed on and those that haven't been in a planning commission position should know. So Mal, you have the floor.
Okay, thanks Bart. Just some quick housekeeping. Cecilia, there are two presentations, correct? How much time would you like me to take for my presentation?
Um, let's see, I think we we allocated about 35 minutes for your portion of it. Is that going to give you enough time?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's fine. It's probably enough time for everyone to catch a quick cat nap. So it'll, it'll work out for everybody here. So I'm going to share my screen. The title of today's presentation is Planning Commission 101 or How Not to Land in Jail. This, if you can enable screen sharing, whoever's in charge of the the Zoom meeting, so I can share my screen. There we go. Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Okay. So this is going to be fairly high level. If you have questions at any time, just speak up. I can't see everybody on the screen. But you can just interrupt me and we can address questions. The most, well, I'm going to be going over a few areas of law and some areas of procedure and kind of practical application. I think that most of you have either served on a planning commission or a council or with a planning commissioner or council before. So a lot of this is going to be review. Apologize for that, although it's always nice to get a refresher to understand how we can avoid litigation and how you can avoid the orange jumpsuit. So having said that, we're going to be talking about a few things. The first is public ethics. We'll be going over open meeting laws, conflicts of interest, and due process and fair hearings. That last one is vital for planning commissions because nearly everything that you do implicates due process, 14th Amendment issues, constitutional issues. We have to make sure as planning commissioners and as staff supporting you, that we are abiding by the applicable laws. Okay, the Brown Act. Again, a lot of this is review. The Brown Act is the, is California's open meeting law adopted just after Watergate. It is, I believe, the strictest in the nation. And it revolves around this idea of a meeting. That's a defined term. So what is a meeting? A meeting is a congregation, whether in person or virtually, of a majority of a legislative body. Here, that would be four planning commissioners to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is germane to the city or the planning commission. So that means that, well, this is certainly a meeting. If four of you afterwards were to go to Cotton's or somewhere else to grab a drink and you began talking about, you know, the, the cultural heritage permit that you just reviewed, that would be a meeting. However, if you were talking about the surf that day or the angels or what, you know, whatever topic you want to talk about, that wasn't San Clemente specific, that wouldn't be a meeting, right? You're allowed to congregate outside of a a meeting as long as you weren't discussing issues that are germane to San Clemente. So in the actual meeting context, right, an agendized meeting, we can only discuss items. I'm going to move my Zoom screen here so I can see my entire, there we go. We can only discuss items or matters that are actually on the agenda. Now, there is on every agenda, a time that I call open mic night where the public can come and speak on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. So anybody can come and they can speak on almost anything as long as it pertains, at least tangentially, to planning commission business. It can be tempting sometimes to discuss or deliberate on the issues that are raised because sometimes they are really important issues. We have to avoid that temptation because that is a Brown Act violation. If something is tempting to talk about or needs discussion, it can be put on a, a future agenda for agendized discussion. There are exceptions for closed sessions. Those rarely have ever applied to a planning commission. I've actually never been part of a planning commission closed session. But this is things like discussing prospective litigation, real property negotiations, employment matters, councils, sit in closed session. And those are the rare exceptions when the public's business does not have to be transacted publicly. Remedies and penalties. So if, if the Brown Act is violated, you can be prosecuted. The, the most likely penalty, the most common is simply egg on face where legislative body is called out for a violation and that violation has to be cured publicly. Meaning that, you know, if something was discussed improperly, if it wasn't agendized, then in a subsequent meeting, it has to be put on the agenda. The planning commission basically has to do a mea culpa and then discuss that item publicly. So it's more embarrassment than anything, but do be aware that, that certain violations can, can be prosecuted. Okay, I've discussed this. You know, here's discusses deliberate takes action. Now importantly, you don't have to have all of these criteria, all these boxes checked for, for a meeting to be a meeting. You can be somewhere and simply hear details of an issue and that can be a meeting, right? You can discuss, but never deliberate, never take action, right? All of these aspects will trigger a Brown Act meeting. So the rule of thumb is ideally, don't congregate together outside of an agendized meeting. If you do, sometimes you've been out for drinks after a planning commission meeting, that's fine. Just make sure that your conversation does not focus on, on, on San Clemente. There's something called a serial meeting, which is the most common way the Brown Act is violated. This is where three, in our case, four planning commissioners would not be at the same place at the same time discussing a planning commission issue, but instead they talk serially. There's two kinds, right? There's, there's the hub and spoke and there's this, the daisy chain. The chain is where A talks to B, B talks to C, and in our case, C would talk to D and they would gain some kind of collective concurrence. That is as much a Brown Act violation as if you all met together. The hub and spoke is where A, B, C, and D would communicate through an intermediary, some third party who would relay to each of the planning commissioners what he or she heard from the others, right? Each of those is improper and a violation. The most likely or the most common way this is violated is through email correspondence and other electronic correspondence. Okay, each agenda has to include, like I said, the public forum. The public has a right to speak before the commission takes action on every agenda item and we can't take action except for on items that are on the agenda. Except for late breaking items initially only applies, I shouldn't say only, but I've only seen it apply in the council context. All right, we've talked about remedies and in the interest of time, we'll, we'll skip over that. Okay, that's the Brown Act. If you have any questions on Brown Act, this is the time to speak up before I move on to ethics laws. Okay, the Political Reform Act, also adopted back in the seventies. This, this is, this is California's basic ethics law and requires disclosure of financial conflicts and disqualification from voting or participating in any manner on an item where you may have a financial conflict. So this revolves around economic interests. You've all filled out your Form 470, which declares all of your economic interests that could give rise to a conflict. These include business interests, sources of income, sources of gifts, real property and, and personal financial interests. The, the one that I'm going to focus on right now is just the gift, the gift limitation. So as a planning commissioner now, the, the gifts that you receive are now more highly scrutinized than before you were a planning commissioner. Now, the gift prohibition doesn't apply to, you know, your spouse or your child or a, a close friend giving you a holiday gift or a birthday gift, but it applies to consultants and others, for example, taking you out to lunch or to dinner. And the limitation is $520 in a calendar year. You cannot go over that. If you have received over $50 in the previous 12 months from a single source, that has to be disclosed on your Form 470. If you have questions on any of these issues, as your service proceeds, the best practice is just to contact me. The intent of this training is to give you an idea of the issues. So down the road, you can issue spot, right? So, so the appropriate red flags can be raised, which then leads to a phone call to me. There are what's called direct financial interests and indirect interests. And this kind of gets into the weeds. It's more nuanced, but the, the important thing to understand for direct versus indirect is that not every economic interest that, that seems like it will disqualify you will disqualify you because some, some may be indirect. Again, you want to come to me whenever you have a question about a, a potential conflict of interest. There are more detailed steps for disqualification now than there were even a few years ago. So if you ever have a financial interest, talk to me. We'll put a script together so you can say the appropriate words before you state your disqualification on the dais. Okay, Government Code Section 1090 is similar to the Political Reform Act, but it is more focused. Long story short here, the city cannot enter into a contract in which an official has a financial interest, period. There can be no disqualification, no disclosure. The simply, simply cannot do it. So if you own a company and you're hoping that the city can contract with your company, you should look elsewhere for your business because it simply can't happen. That one's fairly straightforward. Okay. Due process. I mentioned previously constitutional implications of your actions. So this evening, we have a cultural heritage permit that is discretionary action. It's an entitlement and, and the applicant has constitutional rights because it involves his property, right? We have the right to life, liberty, and property and it cannot be taken away without due process of law. You remember that from your, your, your government courses in college and high school. Due process of law applies at the planning commission level. So the way that we ensure that, that applicants have due process is by providing notice, by providing an opportunity to be heard by an impartial, unbiased decision-making body. That's you. To be impartial, you have to make sure that, that you never say anything outside of a public hearing that would give anybody the impression that your mind is made up before the hearing has commenced. Whether in writing or, or verbally, you never want to say anything that would give the impression that your mind is made up. So avoid that at all costs. When we were together, initially I talked about the idea of ex parte communications. Ex parte is just a fancy word for outside of the hearing. There is nothing wrong. And in fact, I think it's smart to go and visit a site. And often an applicant will call you to talk about the, the project. It's not illegal or improper to talk to an applicant. Just know that if you've done that, you should disclose those, those, those conversations before the public hearing because the rule is that you can only base your decision on facts that are in the record, that have been made part of the record as part of the public hearing, right? So if, if staff presents a series of 10 facts and the applicant then presents a series of 10 facts, we have 20 facts in front of us upon which you can base your decision and base your findings. If you have had a conversation before the hearing with a third party and you base your decision on facts from that conversation and that hasn't been disclosed, that would be improper and can subject the, the, the commission's decision to legal challenge. I, there, there are a few cases, one out of LA where, where the commission's decision was overturned because a planning commissioner made statements before the hearing about his his, his, his position, his general position on the issue. He didn't say that he was going to vote yes or no, but made it clear that he had somewhat of a bias. So again, avoid that at all costs. Okay, we're going to spend some time here on findings. Findings are vital to almost everything that we do as a planning commission. You'll note that, that nearly every item that comes to you has draft findings. So the findings provide a written explanation of why legally and factually, the planning commission is making its decision. When I was, when I was in eighth grade algebra, I clearly recall Mr. Morrison getting mad at me all the time because I didn't show my work. He kept saying, show your work. And he would mark me down even though the answer was right and it made me so mad. But findings are basically the way that we show our work, right? The law does not allow you, just like Mr. Morrison didn't allow me, to simply say, here's our decision and we say it's right. The law requires you to show your work and explain how you came to that decision. So each of the entitlements that are applied for in San Clemente are found in the code in the, in, in San Clemente's zoning ordinance. And each of those has findings that have to be made, right? And so if you're going to approve an entitlement, you have to find or make a finding for each of those required findings in the affirmative. If you're going to deny the entitlement, you only have to make a negative finding for one of the draft findings, right? Because if it, if it, if it fails to meet one of those findings, then the whole thing fails. The reason for findings is, I mean, there are, there are five bullet points that I've included here and you can read through all of those. The, the two that I will focus most on are the first and the third. The first is it provides the commission a framework for making decisions while enhancing the integrity of the admin process. That's really important. An effective planning commission bases its discussion, its deliberation on the findings, right? Because that's, that's really all that you're being asked to do is making the affirmative or in the negative, those five or six or seven findings. So your discussion needs to focus on those findings. So it creates a nice framework. Commissions that do a poor job, they, they, they tend to bounce around, ping around the issues and even the non-issues, discussing a project and really everything but what is relevant to their decision. So again, if you, if you can read the findings before the hearing, understand kind of where, where you're supposed to go and then focus your, your, your conversation on that, you're going to find yourself in a much more productive way as a planning commission. The third bullet point there is, is also important, right? Good findings enable applicants and parties to determine whether and on what basis they should seek judicial review. This is a lot of words for basically saying good findings keep us out of court, right? Because an applicant may disagree with your decision. They often do. But if your findings are strong and they have a good lawyer, that good lawyer will tell them there's no way that we can win, right? Because they have strong findings. There is a very low bar for a city to clear when it comes to legislative actions and everything the planning commission does, with some exceptions, is legislative and quasi judicial, right? But the bar is fairly low. They, they give broad deference to a planning commission. And if we have findings that are supported by facts, a court will generally uphold those. And if the attorney for the applicant who is disgruntled sees that our findings are strong, they generally will not sue us, right? So it keeps us out of hot water, saves a lot of money and a lot of heartache going forward. Okay, so findings can be based on any of the facts that are in the record, facts presented in the staff report, facts presented verbally, written, find, facts, et cetera. You cannot, or you should not base your findings simply on the transcript of the meeting debate, right? What, what this amounts to is making a decision and saying, hey, we're just basing our decision on everything that's been discussed, right? Very lazy and will be challenged. You have to be specific. That, that's why staff always puts together draft findings for you, which are detailed and specific. It's to give you a starting point from which you can then move on or rely on when making your findings. You cannot have boilerplate findings or conclusory findings, right? So one of the standard findings is that a project is compatible with surrounding uses or properties, right? A boilerplate or conclusory finding would simply say, this is compatible with surrounding properties and uses. Okay, that's conclusory. It doesn't say anything. You have to say it's, it's compatible because, and then you lay out your facts, you know, because A, B, C, and D. Findings that are unrelated to the statutory requirements. Again, we want to base everything on the findings that are in the code. And then the, the over elaborate minutes thing is very similar to the transcript of meeting debate. We, we, we can't base our findings just on the minutes or again, on the transcript. Okay, here's an example of findings. These are CUP findings. These are fairly standard for, for every city in California. You're always going to have general plan consistency, zoning consistency. You've got whether the site is suitable for the type and intensity of use. C, the, the use will not be determined until the public health, safety, or welfare. And D, it won't negatively impact surrounding land uses. C and D are the findings where you have the most discretion. And that's where most of our discussion usually, or most of your discussion revolves around, right? Whether it's consistent with the general plan or with the zoning code, that's usually pretty straightforward. But compatibility with surrounding land uses and health, safety, and welfare, that's where you have most of your discretion. Okay, in addition to findings.
Mal?
Yeah, please.
On the conclusory, you know, you said, hey, like for example, on compatibility, you have to say it's, it's compatible because of A, B, C.
Yeah.
Is that also true in the negatives? So needing to say, well, it's incompatible because X, Y, Z?
Great question. Yeah, it's even more applicable there because typically when you're denying, you are, you're in the line of fire when it comes to potential litigation. And so when we're denying a project, we need to make sure that we are completely buttoned up and that we actually have the, the constitutional right to deny that project. And you can only do that when you have robust findings based on facts in the record. What typically happens, staff will usually not bring a project forward that they don't support. Now, it happens sometimes where an applicant will basically force staff's hand and say, look, we're going forward regardless. And staff may recommend denial, but typically it's a recommendation for approval. If the commission goes contrary to staff's recommendation, which you are free to do, what we'll typically do is have a discussion about your findings. I will take notes on, on all the facts supporting your findings and then we'll come back at a subsequent meeting to approve that resolution. The reason for that is we want to make sure that the findings are bulletproof if we're going to deny, so we can, again, avoid litigation. Great question. Any further questions on findings before we talk about procedure briefly? Okay, parliamentary procedure. So we've talked about laws. We've talked about the Brown Act. That's a law. We've talked about ethics laws, the Political Reform Act, Government Code Section 1090. Those are laws. We talked about findings, right? Findings are based in state law. Parliamentary procedure is not a law. This is a best practice. But it's a best practice that can keep us out of legal hot water. So it's always best to adhere as closely as we can to proper principles of parliamentary procedure. Many of you, if not most of you, again, have been on commissions, councils. You know all about this. Bart is really, really good and, and kind of well schooled in San Clemente's approach to parliamentary procedure. So it's nice that he's the chair initially, but you know, this is not rocket science, right? I, I, I often tell my clients that if you just, if you just behave yourself as if your mom was in the audience, you're generally adhering pretty well to basic rules of parliamentary procedure, right? You want to give deference to the person who's speaking. Generally speaking, the chair calls on those who are, who are going to speak or share or deliberate. The chair is parliamentarian, which means that he holds, he or she holds the gavel for the meeting and makes calls of procedure. When, when, when we follow parliamentary procedure, we generally have orderly hearings and meetings. San Clemente Planning Commission is, is just very, very orderly, which is, which is nice because often at planning commission meetings, you have, you know, very controversial topics and, and neighbors and applicants who, who take things very personally. So the, the more that we can adhere to procedure, the better off we are. So as I said, you know, it's important that we don't all speak at once, right? You give deference to the person who's speaking, deference to the chair who makes procedural calls, who calls on people to speak. I'll briefly go over the, the process for making motions. This is where we can get most tripped up. Procedurally, everything else is pretty straightforward. So a basic motion is made after the council, I'm sorry, the commission, sorry, I, I also serve two councils, so I sometimes mess up those nouns. Where after the commission has discussed and deliberated, one person makes a motion and sometimes, I'll just give you a pet peeve. You don't make a move or you don't motion. I guess you could motion. That's a verb, but typically you make a motion or you move to approve X, Y, and Z. Once that's moved, then a second commissioner can second the motion. Okay, once it's been moved and seconded, then there can be discussion regarding the motion on the floor. If there's, if there's nothing else that happens, then the chair will call for a vote and each commissioner votes on that motion. Once a motion has been made and seconded and there's a motion on the floor, there can be a motion to amend, right? These are generally friendly amendments. So if everybody is generally in favor, a planning commissioner could say, hey, look, I love the motion. I just want to make one tweak to it. I'd like to make a motion to amend, right? The, the motion on the floor and then you kind of add your addendum to that motion and that can be voted on. And then if that's accepted, then you have an amended motion on the floor and that's what will be voted on. There can also be substitute motions. So let's hypothetically, Commissioner A and B make a first and a second to move staff's recommendation. So that's the motion on the floor. Commissioner C and D can then move and second a substitute motion to reject staff's recommendation. At this point, we have dueling motions, right? A motion to approve and a motion to reject. So what happens? Well, you vote on the motions in the, the reverse order of what they were made. So you would first vote on the negative motion, right? The one that was made second by Commissioner C and D. If that succeeds, then the first motion is gone. If that motion fails, then the planning commission goes back to the first motion and votes on that first motion. Generally speaking, when we have these types of issues, the, the chair and the commission will kind of ask me the chair and the commission uh will kind of ask me for some guidance and I can walk you through it. Sometimes we'll have kind of three motions on the floor. That's not the ideal. Um, but uh we, uh, again, as a planning commission here in San Clemente, uh, generally well behaved, uh, we, when it comes to parliamentary procedure. Um, finally, the Public Records Act, this will be really brief because I've only got about three minutes left. Um, just note that uh that every person in the city and in California, well, in the world, has a right to inspect the public records of San Clemente. A public record is is anything that's written, that is recorded, any tangible communication that is retained i- by the city in the ordinary course of business. What this means for you is that if you take notes on your agenda, for example, and then you save those notes um in a file or you give them to Cecilia to save in a file, those notes are public records. Your emails that you send back and forth between commissioners on issues, your emails that you send back and forth with staff, those are public records and they are disclosable. And quite often, when it comes to sensitive projects, we'll get Public Records Act requests for, you know, for example, any communications between planning commissioners and staff pertaining to project X. At that point, we have a legal obligation to disclose every email that you've sent or received. Sometimes that can be awkward because a planning commissioner may have said things that uh, once those documents are disclosed, they regret. So just be aware that everything that you write um about the planning commission's business will likely become a public record and disclosable uh to the public. All right. I'm going to fly through this. There's some things that are confidential. This really won't apply to us. Um, not every record is is a record, um, but again, these these don't apply to us. Um, and that is it. So I'm happy to very quickly answer any questions. I think I have about two minutes, Cecilia. I came in under the uh the line there. So if you have any questions about any of these issues, I can answer them now. And then, of course, as we proceed, the next few months, I can I can also answer questions.
I don't hear anybody um stepping up. So Mel, one question from our previous meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, we had um the question on making the motion and whether or not the resolution resolution needs to be fully read um when making the motion. And the answer is?
Answer is no. Um, so Cecilia is looking at me like, ah! In San Clemente, we have, we have a practice where we read the full title, right? And so I'm I'm giving you, I guess, two answers, one that will make Cecilia's face go and 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 one that will make her smile. Um, the smiling one is that in San Clemente, we read the entire title. Um, the unsmiling one is that you are always free to say, I move staff's recommendation. You can always do that. Um, and that can be seconded. Again, the practice is always to read the title. It's not legally necessary.
Thank you very much. So um, you know, it has been the policy in the past to read the whole one and that is probably the preferred way, but uh you certainly, when you make a motion, have the option to uh present it as you wish.
But I will say at council level and at commission, we have always read the title, so.
Correct, correct.
Yep.
Any other questions for um Mel? Thank you. Okay, um, Cecile, you you have the next one. Thank you very much, Mel. We will see you in thirty minutes.
Thanks, Mel. Now you can go take a nap. All right, so um I am going to be partnering with um one of our planners, Christopher Wright, on this next um portion of the study session. And we thought it would be um important to just give the um new commission an overview of the the policy documents and um the regulatory framework um within which you make your decisions as planning commissioners. Um, Mel talked a lot about um findings um and your findings um and your standard of review are going to be based um within this policy and regulatory framework. So um Chris, are you going to pull up the PowerPoint?
Hello, Cecilia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Echo. Yeah, I don't have the ability to pull up the PowerPoint. I don't think I was given that is.
Oh, who has the PowerPoint?
It's in the folder, so I just need Kate to pull it up.
Chris, you have. Chris, you have.
I don't. Okay, well, as long as Kate has it. All right, well, I'm just going to go ahead and start. I'm going to cover um three of the main policy documents that um we utilize um in our staff recommendations. Hey, Chris, do you want to put yourself on mute first? I'm getting some feedback.
Getting some feedback.
Okay, should be better now.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Hmm, no, I think you still need to be on mute. All right, so um the first uh policy document is the general plan. Um, state law requires cities and counties to have a general plan, so that's a statutory requirement. The general plan is a comprehensive, long-term policy document for guiding growth and development. It establishes goals and policies for implementing a city's vision. And per state law, general plans are required to include or address seven issue areas or what we call elements. It's land use, housing, circulation, noise, safety, open space and conservation. And um we provided each of the planning commissioners a hard copy of the general plan, so you can reference it at any time um during your review of projects. Um, some cities um have additional elements to their general plans beyond those seven. Um, in San Clemente, we actually have thirteen elements um in our general plan and um I'll um just go through those quickly um in a minute. So um, actually, you know what? Um, Kate, do you, um, were you given the PowerPoint?
I was not, but I promoted Chris to co-host, so he should have the ability to share his screen at this point.
Okay, I'm working on it. Kate, it's in the presentations folder for the planning commission.
I, can you just email him the presentation? I think that would be better than having him to cer- having him search for it. Sorry about that, commissioners.
I'll get it. I'll get it going.
So the general plan establishes what types of land uses will be permitted where. It lays out allowable densities and intensities. And it defines the boundaries between open space and development. And it includes specific criteria for the city's built environment. Uh, the the city's general plan also identifies uh goals and policies for the basic design and phasing of our circulation system, um, future infrastructure and public service needs um like parks um and libraries and um includes policies to address our um natural resources or protect our natural environment. The city's physical form and economy are greatly influenced by the general plan. The general plan is a reflection of the city's values, high-quality design, preservation of our natural environment, adequate housing, preservation of our historic resources and a strong local economy. Um, this, I mentioned that our general plan has thirteen elements. Those include land use, urban design, historic preservation, economic development, mobility and complete streets, housing, beaches, parks and recreation, natural resources, coastal, public safety, public services, facilities and utilities, growth management and governance. Um, in addition, when the city began the process of preparing a new general plan, the community identified eight focus areas um that we considered to have the most potential for change. So those focus areas have additional um goals and policies for um uh for providing specific direction above and beyond any of those policies that apply citywide. Uh, those focus areas are Camino de los Mahres, the Rancho San Clemente Business Park, Los Molinos, North Beach, um, North El Camino Real, Del Mar, T-zone in the downtown core, the pier, uh, the Pier Bowl and the pier, South El Camino Real, west of Interstate five and South El Camino Real, east of Interstate five. Um, and as Mel mentioned, when a project comes before the planning commission for a decision, the public uh or the planning commission is required to make findings for approval of the project. And the general plan is the policy document that a project has to be consistent with. And to the extent that a project um can um affect or um has elements to it that relate to any of the other issue areas in the general plan, like economic development, like housing, like historic preservation, um, those will also be included in the findings. Um, so staff, um, in the staff reports, you'll see staff includes information on how a project um will um be consistent with or meet all of the policies in the general plan that are applicable. And you'll see that in the report itself, not just in the findings for approval. So um, the next uh policy document is the housing element. Um, the housing element, I'm not going to talk too much about it because um we've actually um have scheduled a housing element one oh one for your next study session, so we'll get into that in a little more depth. But um the housing element is one of the mandatory elements in the general plan. And the state requires that a housing element be a uh updated. So all of the other elements of the general plan will not get updated. Um, but the housing element will get updated every five to seven to ten years, depending on what cycle a jurisdiction is in. So um, the the housing element um w- will provide goals and policies and identify specific actions aimed at planning for housing to meet the needs of all income levels. Um, this includes preserving, improving and developing housing. And um one important element of the housing element is to um identify adequate that adequate sites are zoned and available um to meet the city's fair share of the regional housing needs for all income levels. So, but more about that in the next study session. Um, and um
Sorry, David.
We also.
I have the power.
Yes. Oh, okay, you can go ahead and put it up. Thank you. And um we have a page on the city's website that is dedicated um to the current housing element update. Uh, and Kate, you could just go through these slides until we get to um the next one, next one, coastal land use plan. Yep, there we go. All right, so the last um policy document I'm going to talk about is our coastal land use plan. It addresses land use planning and development standards in the coastal zone. Uh, in twenty eighteen, the coastal commission approved a comprehensive update to the city's coastal land use plan. The last update was done in nineteen ninety-six. It addresses land use in the coastal zone, public access and recreation, marine and land resources, um shoreline bluff and canyon development, hazards such as storm surges, seismic and geological hazards. And it also includes uh visual, cultural and historic resources. So policies in the coastal land use plan only apply to properties in the coastal zone. So the coastal zone is roughly um m- most things west of Interstate five. All development in the coastal zone requires a coastal development permit. Coastal development permits can only be issued by the coastal or by the California Coastal Commission. Um, city staff utilizes the policies in the coastal land use plan for discretionary projects only. And um the city does not have authority to issue permits in the coastal zone yet, um, but we are working on that. Um, we have um efforts underway to obtain our own um certified local coastal program so that we can um issue permits in the coastal zone. And more on that, we'll probably have a future study session that um talks a little bit more in depth about uh the coastal land use plan. Um, and with that, I'm just going to go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. And then um as part of the coastal land use plan, um, there's a biological assessment in the plan. Um, and we've developed some companion documents to the coastal land use plan. We've prepared a sea level rise vulnerability assessment that looks at um sea level rise and um the impact on development um in the future. And then we've also drafted a coastal resiliency plan that um addresses how to um how to deal with sea level rise uh with respect to development. That's in draft form and we're hoping to to finalize that document soon. Um, so I will turn it over to Chris to talk about the um the things that are codified that the planning commission needs to know about.
Thank you, Cecilia. And next slide, Kate. Uh, so uh, the regulatory documents, the purpose of these are to implement to these policy documents, uh, goals and policies of the city. And that these documents must be consistent and compatible with those policy documents. And that's a a process that's underway, these updates. We have an OBR program that's been ongoing since the update of the general plan. And I'll be touching on when these documents have been updated or what our plans are for the next updates. Uh, for the zoning ordinance, it applies to areas outside the city's specific plan. The zoning ordinance includes procedures and applications that come before the planning commission for decisions on development and also items such as specific plan amendments, general plan amendments and so on. Uh, it includes zoning districts shown on our zoning map with development standards such as height, setback and permitted uses. The findings that uh Mel had mentioned in his presentation are noted in our zoning ordinance for your decisions. Uh, we have overlay zones that apply zoning standards in addition to the base zones on the zoning map. We have definitions that are really important to clarify the meaning of terms and how they how to apply the city's regulations. The zoning ordinance is updated for consistency with the general plan in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and eighteen. Uh, there is a cleanup process that the planning commission is part of, in addition to the city council, where in your discussions on various projects or uh maybe a study session like this, the planning commission could direct staff to a- add items to a a cleanup list or to recommend to the city council uh changes to consider in the future. And so the planning commission is an important part of our maintenance uh programs. And we look forward to speaking with you in the future on that. Next slide, please. The city has seven specific plans. A specific plan is an area focused zoning code that also typically includes design guidelines. It can include programs and implementation plans like infrastructure plan or something beyond a typical regulatory document. Uh, the specific plans are typically adopted by the city with an application by a developer or the city can be the applicant as well. Uh, the focus is usually in conjunction with like a larger development area, like, for example, Talega, uh, where there was the development agreement and that development agreement is aligned with uh content in the specific plan and a layout more customized development standards for that larger area that could vary from the typical zoning code standards. Um, uh, the city does not have any active development agreements for larger uh for these specific plans. Uh, however, we do have design guidelines, the development standards. When there's instances where there is not a standard in the specific plan, then you go to the zoning code for the answers and how we and how to review a development proposal. Next slide. Uh, the Pier Bowl specific plan includes a Pier Bowl focus area that Cecilia had mentioned. There's focus areas in our general plan. This is most recently adopt uh updated in two thousand and nineteen for consistency with their general plan and our local, our coastal land use plan policies. And in this area, I should also note that there's an architectural overlay district. So Spanish colonial revival architectures required throughout this area. Next slide, please. The West Pico Quarter Civic Plan was last amended in two thousand The West Pico Quarter Civic Plan was last amended in 2016. This is next on our list to update as part of our general plan consistency work program. We will be actually going to the city council to initiate this update in August. And this does include a focus area in the general plan for the Los Volinos area. And part of that work program will be to look at design guidelines for Los Volinos. That's the implementation measure in our general plan. Part of this specific plan is in the coastal zone. Next slide, please. The Maravilla Coastal Civic Plan was adopted with the plans for the larger Maravilla coastal developments as one coastal development permit. And that was last amended in 2021, this year, for some items, some cleanup items. Next slide, please. The Forest Ranch Civic Plan was last amended in 2017. And it's shown on the slide. I'll say that everything beyond the West Pico Quarter Civic Plan is also on our list for updates that we plan to do in conjunction with the West Pico Quarter Civic Plan. So over the next coming month, we'll be coming to the planning commission for your input, in addition to the community, on that process to update these documents. Next slide. Last amended in 2021, there is a focus area in the general plan for the Business Park area. Next slide, please. The Ranches San Clemente Civic Plan was last amended in 2021. There is also a focus area in the Business Park. Next slide, please. This is the last one. The Marrowhead Inland Civic Plan was last amended in 92. That concludes my civic plan comments. Are there any questions on that? Should I just move on to the sign guidelines? Okay, next slide, please. The city's design guidelines are used to establish objectives for desired design practices, so for site planning, landscape, architectural character. It includes streetscape and other items. These are used in conjunction with their regulations. The design guidelines are considered as a finding typically for a lot of zoning applications when there's a discretionary permit, meaning a public hearing is required or even staff has to make findings that are set out in the zoning ordinance. So the city guidelines, this document that I'm showing here are citywide. And they were originally adopted in 1991 and last amended in 2015. There are specific guidelines in here for the architectural overlay district where Spanish colonial revival architectures required as the Spanish village by the sea vision. And there is a landscape plant list in the appendix that at some point will be updated. This updates to this as well are part of our work program. And next slide, please. In 2003, the city adopted Henry Lanning Design Guidelines for further clarification of the Spanish colonial revival architecture. They're visual based, so there's lots of photos to help the public understand how to apply the design. Next slide, please. The master landscape plan of scenic corridors was last revised in 1992. This is also part of the city's strategic implementation plan for the general plan. There are a variety of trees and plant types that are laid out for scenic corridors that are designated in the general plan. This is in need of an update. There's some newer policies in the general plan. So where there may be inconsistency, if say that a project or the city were to install a new street tree, then we would look at it according to the general plan or the coastal land use plan. Next slide, please. And I'll hand it over to Cecilia.
All right. So I think this is really the last slide. And we just thought it would be important to identify some other documents that could come into play when you're looking at projects. We do have a number of other plans citywide that apply that community development doesn't necessarily coordinate or implement, but they do play a role at times in the review of projects. We have our climate action plan, the bicycle pedestrian master plan, an alley paseo plan that focuses on redevelopment of the alleys within the downtown core area. There is a parks master plan. There's also a wireless master plan for telecommunications facilities. That only applies on city property, and we're looking to update that to include property that is outside of public property and include the right of way. I saved Measure V for last. Several years ago, there was a measure on the San Clemente ballot to preserve open space and not allow open space to convert to developed lands without a vote of the people. Measure V passed successfully. And the the boundary between open space and development in San Clemente is a hard line. If a property owner or an applicant wants to develop open space and redesignate land from open space to something else like residential or commercial or industrial, if it's larger than an acre, it requires a vote of the people. So San Clemente's open space is pretty well protected under Measure V. So with that, that concludes the staff presentation on the overview of regulatory documents and policy documents. I know that was quick and a lot of information. But let us know if you have any questions. And if you've got any follow-up questions or additional information that you would like us to provide, we're happy to provide that to you.
Cecilia, I have a couple of questions. That's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
My understanding is that the some aspects of the coastal overlay zone language don't, are not consistent with the most recent version of the land use plan. I'm wondering if there's been any effort to kind of reconcile those differences.
Sure. So the, you're right. The coastal land use plan has a policy initiatives in there that don't line up with our zoning ordinance. So because those are policies and they're not codified, our standard of review is only what is in Title 17 of the municipal code. So when the city is reviewing projects in the coastal zone, we can only apply the coastal overlay. We are working on phase two of our work in the coastal zone. That's the implementation plan. So we completed our coastal land use plan and are working now on an implementation plan, which is basically the zoning piece that will implement the policies in the coastal land use plan. That is currently on hold because of some fundamental disagreements we have with the coastal commission with regard to what is existing development and what has rights to protection in the coastal zone.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Is it ever the case, I know that, you know, so many of our residents and businesses, landowners have to, you know, go to the coastal commission to get their CDP. Are we, in that case, are we kind of more hands off? So because we know they're going to go through the wringer at the coastal commission. So do we put them through the wringer first, put them through two ringers? Or is it kind of hands off and knowing that they're going to have to go and battle it out with the coastal commission?
You know, we've had this discussion with, you know, internally and with our city attorney. So if the only permit a project in the coastal zone requires from the city is a building permit, all we can apply is the zoning ordinance. We cannot apply the policies in the coastal land use plan because they're just policies. They're not development standards. And we would lose that argument in court if we tried to hold an applicant to the policies in the land use plan or held up their permit for approval because it wasn't consistent with the policies in the land use plan. What we have done is we educate the property owners on the policies that are in the coastal land use plan to make them aware of them because the coastal commission may or may not be applying those policies to projects.
Okay, but we don't give them a hard holdup if they don't meet all of the policies in the land use plan. We just inform them, educate them.
Yes, that's correct.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Cecilia, I'd like to ask a quick question. Actually, could you possibly give us as an example, there's currently median work going on on Los Maris, how the city went about establishing the the design for that median, the landscape specifically?
I am actually not familiar with the median project. That would have been handled by our public works department. We might have reviewed it for consistency with, well, actually, I don't even know if there is anything in the general plan that would have been applicable. So I can't answer that question, but I can get you some information from the public works department on that. And we can share that with all of the planning commissioners.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that seems like something that's pretty important to the city from a design standpoint.
If if it didn't require a building permit or a discretionary permit, community development would not have reviewed it. But Chris, I don't know if you have any information on that.
I just, if it's a public works project, we do coordinate with their public work staff and try to inform them about the policies. And that's the most I could speak to it. I also don't have direct involvement in the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since we've run over time, would anybody on the commission like a couple of minute break before we open the regular planning commission meeting? Okay, I see none. Do we have Katie? Cecilia, is Katie available yet?
You know what? Stephanie is going to be giving Katie's presentation tonight.
Okay, very good. Well, then I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente Wednesday, July 21st, meeting. And Cecilia, could you call and roll one more time?
Yes. All right. Commissioner Camp. Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Chair Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner McCocken. Commissioner McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott.
Here.
And Vice Chair Tyler.
Here.
Okay, I don't know how did McCocken sign off? I don't see him on my screen.
Yes, he signed off. He was actually remote from Michigan. And it's about 10 o'clock his time, so.
Okay. Well, I'm remote from San Luis Obispo, so I'm on the same time zone. Vice Chair Tyler, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have, the next item is special orders of business, and we have none. We have a set of minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of July 7th for approval. Do we have any comments or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve. This is Commissioner Prescott.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I will second it then. Okay, Commissioner McCann, I'll give you the second. So it's a motion by Commissioner Prescott and second by McCann. We will take a voice count on that. Vice Chair Tyler.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Camp.
Aye.
Commissioner Prescott.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall votes aye, so passes 6-0. The next item is oral and written.
I'll vote aye too.
Oh, there he goes. Very good. You have Commissioner Cosgrove votes aye also. So it passes 6-0, 7-0, excuse me. The next item is oral and written communications. Cecilia, I received an email this afternoon from Lisa. Is that one that should be read into the record? You're muted, Cecilia.
Sorry. Yes, I believe they requested that their comment be read at the planning commission meeting tonight.
You have that in front of you that you could read?
I I do. I'll read that now. This is from David York, and he writes, I am writing regarding an in-concept review, I C R E S 21-065, which was submitted on May 10th, 2021. The project is a simple addition and alteration with a pool cabana. The review seems to be dragging on for no apparent reason. The project planner decided to send this through the DMT, which I believe for the size and scope was unnecessary. The other departments had no comments on the project, and the only comments finally received from planning were to dimension an existing chimney and remove a proposed landscape fireplace. It should be considered that this project still needs to be submitted to the coastal commission and will take another three to four months. I would like a response from the planning director as to the when this review will be complete so I can submit to the coastal commission. Thanks, David York.
Okay, thank you very much. And I guess all we can discuss on that was that Cecilia, if you would give her him your contact information, that would be the response he's looking for. So great.
I'll follow up with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is the consent calendar, and we have one item to do, and that's the housing vacancy rate certification fiscal year 2021 through 2022. Christopher Wright. And normally on consent items, if no commissioner has a question for Christopher Wright or wants the presentation made at this point, we can do so. Does anyone have any questions of Christopher Wright or of that item? I see none. Do we have a motion to certify the annual housing vacancy rate for 2021 through 2022? And find it categorically exempt from California Civil Act? So do we have a motion to approve that and move it along?
I move that we, this is Commissioner McCann, I move that we accept the housing vacancy rate certification for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Motion by Chair Pro Tem McCann, do we have a second? I will go ahead and second it then. Crandall seconds it. We will take a voice vote. Vice Chair Tyler.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Aye.
Um. Commissioner Cosgrove.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Camp.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Prescott.
Aye.
Uh, and Commissioner Crandall was also an aye. Um, the next items of business are the public hearing. We have one item tonight, um, one oh one one Buena Vista Cultural Heritage Permit twenty dash three seven eight. Ashabi addition, uh, and Katie Crockett is the one who wrote the, um. Staff report, but Stephanie Roehaus, our senior planner, will be making the presentation tonight. Stephanie?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. First off, you know, welcome to the commission. I really look forward to working with everyone over the next year. So let me just get my PowerPoint presentation up on the screen. Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so as Chair Crandall mentioned, um. I am presenting tonight because unfortunately, the project planner Katie Crockett cannot be here. She is attending to some family matters across the country. However, it was very, very important for Katie to keep this project moving forward and remain sensitive to the applicant's timing needs. So for that reason, I am presenting it on her behalf tonight. Okay, so the property contains an existing four-unit apartment development. The project would combine two units, reducing the overall unit count to three. The proposal also includes an addition and alterations to the garage. It requires a cultural heritage permit because it is located within three hundred feet of a historic structure. Because this application is limited to a C H P, the purpose of planning commission's review tonight. Is to ensure the project is compatible with the historic resource, that the project is consistent with the design guidelines. And is in character with the neighborhood. Here is the project location. The site is located about one hundred and forty feet away from the historic structure. Multifamily properties within three hundred feet of a historic resource are required to go through this C H P process. The existing buildings are nonconforming. The property does not comply with current code requirements for the south side, rear bluff, and garage setbacks. It also does not comply with the required number of parking spaces. However, the buildings are permitted to maintain its current site layout and nonconforming conditions. And this is because the addition does not expand its floor area by more than fifteen percent or fifty percent, five zero. Okay, so pictured here is the site plan, and the darker area in the middle depicts the proposed addition area. As you can see, the addition only affects the interior of the lot, and therefore, the proposed addition is not visible from adjacent properties on either side. And due to the garage location in front of the main structure, the addition is actually not visible from the street. So as mentioned earlier, the existing detached garage is nonconforming. And alterations are proposed that would increase the structure setback from the street. This project was reviewed twice by the design review subcommittee. Overall, the design review subcommittee was supportive of the overall design, especially keeping the height of the structure low. And maintaining the one-story profile. The subcommittee also supported moving their garage back from the front property line as it would improve the property's aesthetics. And notably, the subcommittee determined the project would not have negative impacts on the nearby historic resource. So pictured here is the project site as viewed from the historic property. So with the proposed changes to the garage, which would further set it back, the building will be even less visible from the historic property. The D R C was concerned with twelve-foot garage setback, and they were specifically concerned that it could result in parked cars encroaching over this accessible sidewalk. Um, they were specifically concerned about the legal implications of approving a garage with this layout. So the subcommittee did direct staff to discuss these concerns further with the building official, the code compliance manager, city engineers, as well as the city attorney's office. And overall, staff concluded that this project does not result in increased liability to the city. Staff believes the project does not create additional legal concerns from a parking and accessibility standpoint. And in some ways, this project provides added protection to the city by allowing us to add conditions of approval. So on this exhibit, the applicant demonstrates that by moving the garage back, it improves the current condition that is less than ideal. These are single-car garages, so it is difficult to park many of the common vehicles today, such as an S U V. The existing narrow garages have resulted in vehicles parking in front, which leaves cars blocking the entire public sidewalk. So at the recommendation of D R C, condition of approval seven point one seven was added. It specifies that vehicles cannot be parked on the driveway in a manner that blocks the public sidewalk. And any violations would be subject to code enforcement action. Um, in response to D R C feedback, the applicant also made modifications to the scale and design of the doors at the garage elevation. To provide better balance and proportionality. They all also added turf block, which is not pictured here, just imagine that it's there, that, uh. Was requested really just to soften the dominance of the driveways in the front setback area. Uh, staff received one public inquiry, but after answering those questions, they were supportive of the overall project and did not wish to leave a public comment. So in summary, the applicant addressed all comments and concerns raised by the design review subcommittee during its two meetings. D R C determined the project does not impact the nearby historic resource, and overall, it improves the curb appeal of the property. The project makes the garages more functional, and a condition of approval prohibits vehicles from being parked over the sidewalk. So for tho- those reasons, staff recommends approval of this cultural heritage permit application. And joining us on the Zoom meeting today is the applicant and project designer Heidi Kohler. Uh, the property owners Alan and Pari Ashabi are also in attendance. Um, but as I mentioned, since I am not the project planner, I will need to defer any questions about the project design or plans to Heidi. Um, but I would be more than happy to answer any questions regarding the city's zoning code requirements and its applicability, as well as our application process. Thank you.
Um, Stephanie, does the applicant want to make a presentation or the architect want to make a presentation at this time?
Yes, I believe Heidi wanted just to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
Hi, commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, Stephanie pretty much covered the intent of the project. Essentially, the homeowner intends to improve this property. To make a long-term home for themselves, with a focus on improving the exterior and keeping with the area. And additionally, improving the parking condition by making the parking garages usable and extending the setback. So really, that was the focus, um, the intent of the applicant, and that was sort of the direction that they give me that we've worked towards. Um, with the city to achieve that. Be happy to answer any questions you have about the design.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we will now have questions for staff, and I will say that it's, um. A little bit, uh, difficult since Katie's not here. Um, she was in the design review meetings. Uh, when we reviewed this project, and so Stephanie, uh, I apologize that I'm gonna be addressing you. And I'm not sure we're gonna be able to get all the answers we might need on this. But during design review, we. The one comment we did make is aesthetically, yes, moving the garage back is a good thing. Um, I still don't personally understand how with a cultural heritage permit. Um, which is meant to protect our, uh, cultural heritage and historic resources. Um, we can make a finding on the garage itself. The. Uh, purpose of the cultural heritage permit is, um. To make sure there's no impacts on, um, in this case, um. Historic home that is within three hundred feet of the building, and it honestly does not. That isn't a big issue. So that part of the process is good. Uh, if the cultural heritage permit was for a house directly next door, if there was a historic structure. We could make exceptions, and we could continue legally nonconforming, uh, conditions. To protect that stuff, um. Uh, historic structure. If the garage was in a place that was gonna block the view of the historic structure. We have the ability to make a change to protect the historic structure. I don't see that that's what we have in front of us today. We've got a case where the graphic you saw of the garages, Stephanie, show a bunch of different setbacks. The only two that matter are the existing setback from the property line and the building setback. Uh, right now, it's, I think, four feet to the front of the garage. They're proposing twelve feet. Neither of them comply, but the garage itself is a legally nonconforming structure. It was built before the codes were changed, so that property owner has a right to have that garage there. Do they have a right to have it twelve feet from the property line? Not according to the code, the way I interpret it. Um, it may be something I'd like to have. I don't see that we can say arbitrarily, they can, and don't be fooled. This is a tear down and redo of the garage. There's nothing I can identify there that's a remodel of the garage. They're taking the garage, moving it back into a nonconforming, um. Setback, which is, um. Required to, if if they tear down the garage and totally move it. The way I interpret the code, it needs to meet new standards. If it was a remodel, that's another situation. But Stephanie, do you have any firsthand knowledge of what tool are we using? To approve a nonconforming structure in a new location?
Sure, you know, thank you for the question, Chair Crandall, because I know that this was a hot topic during the design review subcommittee meeting. To, you know, provide a legal mechanism, uh, to facilitate the, uh, construction and relocation of the garage. In its current, you know, um, uh, layout as presented in the plans.
And I'll be real quick. I'm sorry I interrupted you real quick, but, um, also, uh. When you're addressing that question, tell me how it also applies if there was no cultural heritage permit at all. In other words, if a neighbor was gonna do the same thing, and there was no cultural heritage permit. Would this be the same, um, decision process?
Sure, okay, so, um, what Katie described to me was that during the design review subcommittee meeting. And I don't recall if it was you, or it might have been Commissioner Wu at the time. But that they, that one of you very wisely brought up a section of the nonconforming chapter of the zoning code. Um, let's see if I can actually just share my screen, maybe that might be easier. But there's a specific section that talks about applicability, and it creates exemptions for certain types of projects. Or certain types of structures, and specifically, there is an exemption for in-the-bank garages located in residential zones. Which do not comply with front yard setback regulations. And the commissioner, and I'm guessing since this is, um, this may sound new to you, it might have been Commissioner Wu. Um, suggested taking a look at that code section to see whether or not it applied. Um, and their belief was that it, because it falls under this exemption. It does not need to apply for a minor exception permit to request a deviation from the garage setback requirements. So Katie went back, took a look at that closely, did determine that it does meet the the criteria for, um, being an in-the-bank garage. That does not meet the, um, the front setback requirements, and so for those reasons, um. It would not need to, uh, request a minor exception permit to deviate from the setback standards. And that it could be, um, approved, um, essentially, um, you know, with even without the the cultural heritage permit. So to give you another example, um, and answer a question about what would happen. If there was a similar project that was located more than three hundred feet of a historic resource. So as everybody knows, San Clemente is a very, very hilly community, and there are a number of properties with, um, changes. In the grade and elevation, um, and so, you know, to facilitate the construction of these garages without. You know, requiring a whole lot of excavation on the property, um, our zoning code does, um, have more flexibility. Uh, when it comes to in-the-bank garages, to really, um, facilitate, reduce setback requirements. Um, you know, as a result, or, um, for the benefit of reducing the amount of grading that needs to take place on site. So if this was another property, and they were proposing to make changes on an in-the-bank garage. On a property that does have, um, topographic changes within that site. We would also have the ability to approve a garage with, you know, less than an eighteen-foot front yard setback. So ultimately, what was concluded following the design review subcommittee. Was that the minor exception permit, which they, the applicant was previously requesting, was no longer applicable. Because it was exempt under that specific category for in-the-bank garages.
Uh, do you have the definition of what an in-bank garage is? How much banker has to be involved? It's not in the packet, um, so does this actually comply with the current one, the one that's there now? Is that an in-bank garage?
Um, let me take a look. You know, unfortunately, there is not a specific definition for in-the-bank garage.
That, that's been one of my problems. I'm the one that brought it up.
Oh, okay.
And, um, so I'm very concerned whether or not that exception applies. Because there is no definition for it. And I'm not gonna take any more time here asking questions, but, um. I want to make sure that people understand what a nonconforming is versus a legally nonconforming. And can we arbitrarily, if we don't know if it's a bank garage or not, make a decision on, uh. Moving this thing, because there's no, no real documentation saying why this exception, and it's not even one of our findings. Um, is allowed, um, so we'll have that during discussion. We will probably rely on you to field questions during the discussion part. Uh, would anyone else like to ask any questions of Stephanie on this project or the applicant? Uh.
Chairman, I would like to ask a question. This is Commissioner Prescott. Did you mention, Stephanie, did you mention that the, um, the owner originally requested a minor exception permit? First?
That's correct. So it was actually something that the project planner Katie determined would be required. Because as they started reviewing the application and saw that they were proposing to, you know, relocate and alter the garage significantly. Um, and that it did not comply with the minimum garage setback requirement, which is eighteen feet. Uh, she said that, you know, since it did not comply with code, that they would need to request a minor exception permit. To deviate from the setback standards. So that was what was being requested, but typically, those applications are all processed concurrently. Um, and it was part of, you know, the proposal package that was last presented to design review subcommittee. Um, but as I mentioned, subsequent to that, and the discussion on in-the-bank garages, and whether or not it's applicable in this case. Uh, Katie did determine that, um, it does meet that criteria.
Okay, and then the cultural heritage permit was brought up after this or requested or concurrently?
It was, um, the cultural heritage permit was always the original application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Tyler, did you have a question?
Yeah, it would just be on a finding if we were to make one, um, finding B one. Let's see, not, yeah, that one. It just says that it meets all development standards in the zone, and I would prefer that we added. A finding that referenced that the setbacks were in fact nonconforming, rather than saying that they are compliant with all of the development standards. Um, but I don't know that we're there yet, so that's just something I think when we make the motion, I'd prefer we add some specificity there. So that if in fact this applicant came back in the future, that at least would be noted in the record here.
Very good. We'll have that discussion during, uh, the discussion phase. That's a good, good comment. Um.
Chair Crandall.
Commissioner McCann.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie. On the plans on sheets, A one oh one, it references that some of the existing walls. Of the existing garage are to remain. So because of that. That makes it a remodel of a garage, not a, not a completely new. Is that, is that? that makes it a remodel of a garage, not a not a completely new. Is that is that accurate technically?
You know, unfortunately, I'm going to have to defer that question to the project designer Heidi. Heidi, if you don't mind unmuting yourself.
Of course. Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. We are leaving um portions of both the exterior wall and an internal wall, uh the majority of it that's able in place. Uh, so yes, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I will ask the question, what percentage of that because we're taking a building, moving it back 12 feet. It's and all the walls are being raised in height and the foundation is on it. So I I understand what you're saying, but I'm personally not convinced of it. So if you could convince me of it, that would be great.
Uh, we don't have an exact calculation, but based on the very precise demo plan that we've prepared, um, that was our intention was to alter the bare minimum to be able to fit that definition. So there are those two walls. They'll be in the exact same place. So the portion of the wall that's the same will remain and any portion of the slab that can be used again would would be used uh as much as is feasible.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions at this point uh for staff? I see none. Um, so we will close.
Sorry, I'm a little slow.
Oh, uh, Commissioner Camp.
I was just looking at the plan. Um, question, did the design review subcommittee, are they recommending approval?
Uh, the design review subcommittee uh did not make a recommendation one way or the other. The applicant had been there twice. Uh, we gave them uh suggestions uh and not necessarily all of them were followed, but it was time to move the project along.
Okay, and another question. The only reason we're looking at this is because of the cultural heritage permit requirement?
That's that's correct, yes. So if it was located um about 150 feet more east, then it would have um been just far enough away from the historic resource to uh not trigger the need for the cultural heritage permit.
Okay, but it is considered um a significant improvement to the property. What triggers a requirement for conformance to the setbacks in terms of uh, you know, improving the property?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so our um zoning ordinance does have a very long chapter. It's uh chapter 17.72, um all about non-conforming structures and uses, and it has different categories um and spells out the different criteria that would be met for additions, for repairs and alterations and expansions. And it kind of, you know, sets up, you know, what those different thresholds would be before a project would be required to or before a structure or building would be required to come into conformance with all development standards, including setbacks. And typically for additions, it's 50%. So 50% is kind of that magic number where if they are increasing the floor area by more than 50%, then they would in fact need to comply with um current setbacks and 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 development standards. They would not be allowed to maintain their non-conforming building layout. Um, and then there's another provision within the non-conforming chapter section that talks about um altering kind of like the structural walls of of the building. So that deals with when you have very um significant renovations to a project where they're basically, um even though they're not ex- um expanding the building, they may be tearing down all of the stucco and bringing it all the way down to its its framing. Um, in that case, also the 50% rule applies. So if they're not removing more than it's um more than 50% of its structural frame, then again, the non-conforming building is um has has the ability to maintain its non-conforming conditions. And in this particular case for this um the shabby addition project, uh neither of those 50% thresholds were met. So less, uh the addition comprises less than 50% of the floor area, and the walls that are being uh removed is less than 50% of the walls on the site um currently currently there today.
Okay, so the it appears that the roof is being removed and replaced. Is that just the roofing? It's not clear to me, or is that the roof structure?
Um, I I'm sorry, Commissioner Camp. What was your question?
The roof that's being removed
Mm-hmm.
from the primary where the where the the new single family dwelling portion is. It appears that the roof is being removed.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the drawings say.
Yeah, so I can't speak to the roof, whether or not the roof roof is being removed. I would have to defer to Heidi on that. But typically, um in the calculation of that 50%, it usually deals with the structure itself. So I don't believe um the roof is typically counted in that computation. Usually when I've seen um the exhibits, it's usually showing um all of the walls um along the exterior, and that's used as the basis for um, you know, computing what percentage of the exterior walls are being removed for the purposes of um, you know, non-conforming structures.
And Commissioner Camp, now let's uh you can um direct that to uh the architect also and ask them that specific question. Uh, Heidi Kohler, can you uh address that?
Yes, um, that was actually something that was raised by the dot design review subcommittee during one of the reviews. So a subsequent submittal did show a plan showing that less than 50% of the roof is also going to be altered in the remodel.
Okay, but the roof structure is being replaced, is that?
Uh, not the entire roof structure. So we'll only be altering and replacing less than 50% of the existing roof in the proposed design.
Okay, I'm not going to quibble here, but just looking at it, appears that the roof, at least on the plan, is being removed along with the new garage would definitely exceed 50%. And again, I'm not questioning your calculation.
Sure. Are you saying specifically as it relates to the garage or the project completely?
Well, I mean, the garage roof is being replaced, right?
Um, the garage roof is, however, it was our understanding from staff that both the exterior wall and the garage were not required to be part of that overall calculation. So they are not included in the 50%. So if you see sheet A102, you'll see on the demolition plan, the part of the roof that's to remain and the part of the roof that will be altered. So essentially, over the combined units, much of the roof is to be removed and altered, but over the existing units, we're going to work with the roof that's there in the proposed design. However, the entire roof, because the garage needs to be relocated, would need to be removed. Hope that is a little more clear.
The roof of the structure?
Of the garage only, correct.
Another question on sheet AS 001. There's some walls that are indicated in the front setback. And there's a couple of notes. One says existing wall to remain, top of wall reduced to 42 inches. And then the extension of that wall that runs parallel with the street says existing wall to remain, top of wall 72 inches. So does that step up that that wall as it gets out to the street or am I misreading here?
So there is an existing wall that runs uh parallel to the street and then turns the corner and dives into the existing garage. The most recent submittal should read that all those existing walls are to remain.
Okay, so they're all going to stay at 72 inches?
Correct, correct.
That's above adjacent grade?
Correct. Uh, from our property grade. It's got uh retaining behind it, obviously, on the property next to it. So that that height to the top of the wall is from our side.
Okay, so the visible portion from.
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Uh, certainly, Commissioner Prescott.
Will the uh Stephanie or Heidi, will the uh garage uh remain detached?
Yes. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Stephanie.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And I will uh ask one question if I may to uh uh the architect. Um, the code says between accessory structures, et cetera, uh on a site that five foot is the minimum we can have between them. Uh, you showed 3.6. Did you find an exception that I did not find in the code to allow that?
It was our understanding that three feet was what was required for fire code.
Um, okay, I I'm going to ask Stephanie then. I found in uh the code that it specifically says for distance from primary building, a detached accessory building, which is a garage, shall be a minimum of five feet from the primary building, except as modified by table 17.4080, which is uh antennas. So that doesn't part doesn't apply. But um I want to make sure that we aren't going to either have to have an exception there or move the garage from the planned location.
Mm-hmm.
So can that be confirmed uh while we have our discussion?
Yes, let me, um, thank you for bringing that up. That is definitely um something that is stumping me right now. Uh, that was not something that Katie specifically discussed with me before her departure. So let me um take a look at this and hopefully I can, you know, uh get back to you on that.
Okay, that was in uh section accessory buildings and structures. A general requirement, standards, standards, and then it's uh um D3 in that uh section. Okay, do we have any other questions uh at this point um before we move on to uh public comment and oh, uh, Commissioner Camp, you have another question?
Yeah, just is this still going to be required to go to coastal commission for final approval or is that not not part of?
That is correct. Since it is on a coastal bluff, um unfortunately, it is not within our exclusion order area. So anything on the coastal bluff does need to go to coastal commission for review and approval.
Okay, so assuming we approve this tonight, it's still going to have to go through that coastal commission process.
And that's correct.
Okay, I mean, do you believe, I don't know if this is a fair question, but do you do you believe this is approvable by the coastal commission? Or should that even play into our consideration?
Um, kind of looking at Cecilia here because she's our coastal expert on how to respond to that.
Hey. So um your standard of review is the coastal land use plan. Um, we have reviewed the project against the coastal land use plan, and staff has made findings in the affirmative that the um elements of this um rehab project or remodel project are consistent with the policies in the coastal land use plan. What whatever um the coastal commission might um consider related to chapter three of the coastal act, um, you know, we we can't anticipate. We can only look at um our coastal land use plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Um, any other questions? I see nobody's microphone on, so we will close the question answer with the applicant and staff and open it to public comment. Um, Cecilia, do we have any public comment that uh for the record?
I have not received any.
Okay, we will open it up for discussion. And um I don't see anybody jumping in. I will just ask one real quick um thing to consider is throughout the um staff report, it's been said that uh we aren't increasing the uh impact of uh these setbacks that uh it doesn't increase the uh nonconformity. And I just want to throw out a thought that in um Irvine, uh in the specific plans where they had zero lot line projects and all, it was a specific requirement that you never had more than an eight foot driveway. Um, excuse me. You could have a driveway, it could be eight foot or less or 20 foot or more and nothing in between because it encouraged um illegal parking, where the cars would come out over the driveway. So are we looking at this setback saying, gee, and this is what's always bothered me a little bit. All the justifications for the uh reduced setback um have been because, and to be honest with you discussing, they want to park in the front yard, in the driveway. And I don't blame them one little bit, and I understand their argument completely. But are we encouraging more illegal parking? Right now, you can't park there. You can't park in the driveway. If we move it to where they're locating it, you can park in the driveway, but you're also parking in public right of way because the cars will overhang. That's why I said that document of the um showing the uh cars parked uh in the new location. And for an ADA uh sidewalk, whether it's a ever this sidewalk may never be connected to another sidewalk. I understand that. But um apron cuts you can't use as the walkway. So the ADA access actually has to be behind the apron in most cases. Um, so it appears that it's very difficult to make the finding this isn't going to impact or encourage more illegal parking than it does now. Um, so keep that in mind, um, or please respond to me and convince me otherwise. And um that uh they currently have the right um to the location of the garage where it is. Um, does is it aesthetically more pleasing? Yes. Does it affect the cultural heritage permit? No. Um, but it does encourage parking illegally, and it seems to be a tough finding to make if that's the case. Um, anyone want to uh jump in with their observations at this point of the project? Commissioner Tyler, uh, Commissioner Tyler had her mic up first.
I just have a question for staff and um how much precedence does this set to approve other non-conformities of similar structures that are sort of sort of de- deconstructed and then moved a little bit? I just was curious how this sets us up for future decisions like this.
I can chime in on that. Um, there is no direct precedent set, meaning that there's no legally binding precedent. Um, now certainly the planning commission staff will look at past decisions to determine uh what to do in the future, but as far as anything that's legally binding, um, one decision will not uh bind a future decision.
Thank you.
Uh, any? Uh, Commissioner McCann.
Thank you. Um, Chair Crandall, I think you bring up some good and valid points that are certainly worthy of discussion, and and they're kind of eagle eye catches too. Um, to me, though, it's, I I think this is a project we should be approving. Um, we wouldn't even be seeing it if it wasn't for its proximity to the historic resource. Uh, as best I can tell, it improves the the historic resource by making the garage less visible from the historic resource. Um, if if people, my guess is that people are parking kind of all over the place there right now. They can't fit their cars in the old garages. So that encourages more parking kind of all over the place. If people are parking on the sidewalk and it's a problem, that's an enforcement issue. Um, I I think if, you know, trying to, we're making a bad situation or the applicant is making a bad situation a lot better by pushing the garage back and making it more usable to begin with. Um, so I I'm in support of this project. Um, I think we shouldn't make uh, you know, not do a project because it can't, it can't be perfect, but instead we're making it a lot better, but we're rejecting it because we can't make it comply with the 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 setback. So I I would be supportive of the project. Uh, I could certainly, you know, find the findings um with the revision recommended by Vice Chair Tyler.
Chairman Crandall, um, I I also.
Chairman Crandall, um, I I also. Uh, appreciate the that you uh are um doing the due diligence on this property. I see that the owner would be living on the property and this would reduce the rental. Uh, uncertainties of that neighborhood. And having the owner on property, I think would be a great benefit to that area. And I would agree with Scott's uh interpretation about the parking as it is now. It looks like. Probably uh they're already parking on the streets or possibly blocking that that driveway anyway by setting it back. It might encourage or at least look better and the owner would have maybe pride of ownership. It does look better from the drawings uh from the original. It does update the community. So I would be in favor of this project as well, based on Tyler's findings.
Okay, very good comments. Uh, I do want to uh, this is a trap I've fallen into in the past. I. Very sympathetic to applicants and. The fact that um they're living there and it's their home. Uh, but we are entitling the property. And we really can't take into account because. They may own the property two years and no longer be there. Um. That may or may not apply in the decision making for this one, but uh. Um, keep that always in mind that uh. These are decisions that last as long as the property is developed. Not just for the current tenant. Uh, very good. Any other uh comments? Uh, Commissioner Camp.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say that I agree that it's an improvement. Um, from what's there now. I think that the applicant's being sensitive. Um, and keeping the, you know, well below the height. Uh, my concern is similar to Commissioner Tyler. Which is. You know, we're making or we're allowing a property that's currently nonconforming legally. Nonconforming. To continue to be nonconforming. Um, by some. Some degree. Um, and there's a, I think there is a potential precedent. For allowing. These nonconformities sort of be. Pick, you pick your nonconformance, you know, pick, pick and choose. We'll we'll keep the side setback where it is. Um, we'll do a little bit better on the front setback. Maybe that balances out with the height. That becomes a very subjective. Um, decision, and we're in a position here. Of making a sub- a subjective. Um, decision whether to approve or not to approve. Um, although I like what's being done. I I am concerned that the, you know, neighbor down the street is gonna say, well. We did some calculations. We found that the entire roof structure, including the whole garage. Was demolished. The whole roof structure. Was demolished, although part of it was preserved. To me, this is looking like a reconstruction of a project. How do we? Determine. You know, what triggers, what triggers the the conformity with the current zoning? I I think that's a concern. So.
Uh Chairman Crandall.
Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove.
Yeah, just on that point that uh. Commissioner Camp was making. Uh, maybe this would be helpful, I'm not sure, but I'm reading the staff report. That it's um under the development standards portion of the report. That, and I'm just gonna quote the report. Because the addition is less than fifty percent. Of the existing floor area. And the project does not alter fifty percent or more of the structural walls. The existing nonconformities are permitted to remain. I was relying on that. To be comfortable. With the fact that this seems to be. Um, able to move ahead. And that the cultural heritage aspects of it are good, which is really the purview that we're be, we should be focused on. And the staff is saying the rest of this nonconformity. Should be allowed to continue because it's under the fifty percent. Of both the um. Existing floor space, because it is a large, it's not, you know, we're talking to, you have to consider the entire site. Not just the garage. And so therefore, I think, you know, if we can rely on that and the staff standing behind that tonight. I feel like we should be supporting the project as proposed by staff. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I I think um. Just for clarity and to uh um. Make Mal feel comfortable. Um. I will go through the findings we're up, you know, required to make. And um, and this is where I had gotten hung up, but. That's me. The architectural treatment of the project complies with Sancom and General Plan. That's the first one. I can certainly make that uh. Finding. The architectural treatment of the project complies with any applicable specific plan. And zoning code in areas including but not limited to height, setback, color, et cetera. I'm. Not convinced in my mind completely on the setback that this is the procedure we should go through. I. Still feel it should have a uh exception permit. Um, but they have the right to do this project. With the garage and its existing location. So we're not necessarily. Denying the project. Um, if we say. We certainly agree with the project, um, but. We can make a. Uh, recommendation that they meet the setback or whatever. Um, so I I'm struggling with that. Um, item. Uh, item C, the architecture treatment of the project complies with the city's design guidance, yes. The general appearance of the product, the proposal is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Yes. The proposal is not detrimental to the orderly and uh harmonious development of the city. This parking issue, I think, is a a real problem because we have it all over the city and be sensitive. It's in the pier bowl. It's everywhere. Code enforcement. Cannot enforce. People parking in the driveways into the street. It just doesn't happen. And they're not able to do it. Um, so that's a concern. The proposed project will not have negative visual. Or physical impacts upon the historic structural, and I agree with that. Um, so if everybody's comfortable that they can make all the findings, um. Uh, your vote will say that, but um. I'm still struggling with the uh. Fact, we're giving setbacks that are arbitrary. Um. And I'm not sure that uh. That's something. I can support. But I certainly support the project and uh. Uh. One's question for Stephanie. If if we are getting rid of a legally nonconforming structure. What's this new one gonna be called? Is it just a nonconforming structure or it can't be legally because by the definition? Those can only occur if they were built prior to. Um, I can't quote the date, but prior to the zoning code change.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
So what 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 has it become?
Yeah, so my understanding, when I did discuss this with Katie, is that because it is considered an in the bank garage. Which has, you know, different setback requirements. It does not need to comply with the standard eighteen foot requirement, that it would be a conforming structure.
Okay, um, Mal, I'm gonna ask you to step in that I'm. Struggling with, since we have no definition of an in-bank garage. Um, can somebody come in and say? Hey, I've got an eighteen foot stem wall I'm putting on the back of my garage, so now it's an in-bank garage. I don't have to worry about the front setback.
Yeah, so the def- where where definitions are not provided by the code, um, those definitions. Are determined by the planning commission. Um, and uh, you know, we we don't, we don't have that issue technically before us this evening. Um, but if it were, you would simply um. Use your reasonable discretion to determine whether or not this qualifies as an in-bank garage. Um, I think it would be difficult for us from a legal perspective to determine that. This this garage uh was not based on my conversations with planning staff and the apparent intent. Of this code provision. Um, but again, those those definitions are uh are promulgated by the planning commission. To your previous question about what this, what this becomes. Um, because the garage, uh, you know, assuming the. Definition is correct, is exempted, and because the structure remains nonconforming. Uh, there would be no change to status of this of this property. It would remain a legal nonconforming use, just just as it is uh. Presently.
Okay, very good. Uh, does anyone have else have any discussion?
Commissioner Crandall, I just wanted to add or clarify that this new garage would accommodate. More than one car, two cars, possibly three?
Oh, I absolutely agree that um, but that can be done with a remodel to the existing. In the same location. It doesn't, the garage doesn't have to move to accommodate cars. And modifying it and doing changes to the existing garages. Totally fine.
And your con- your concern for the the twelve foot setback is that they might. Park their cars there and not park them in the garage?
Uh, no, it's that uh at any time they park in the driveway, even if there's a car in the garage. Um, and it goes across the sidewalk and into the public right away. Um. And the whole discussion. And where I struggled with it was. Every argument they made for doing this. To me sounded like a request for variance. More than anything else. Um, and that's how it was justified. And I just um. Uh. And I'm just one out of seven, so. It doesn't sound like, it's a big problem, but it seems like. A variance would be uh. Something that I used as kind of, could they get a variance for this? And I don't know if they could. Because those, that's a very high standard when you get to a variances. Um, do they have the right to use their property equally to other people? Um, you can't take into account, gee, it would be nice to do. That's not an argument. Um. There's a whole bunch of steps and I wasn't able to. Get my brain around it to say that, yeah, they could get a variance for it. I'm not so sure that could. So um, Mal knows the uh. How tough it is to get a variance. Um. And I was kind of using that as my standard. Uh. Since I couldn't define what the in-bank garage was, the fact. The arguments that the applicant made for doing the driveway bigger as. Um. Gee, it's easier to park illegally. I don't know if that's, and I know it can't be uh enforced by code, they are code enforcement. Doesn't have the manpower to uh do that around the entire city, so. That's that's been my concern. Uh, I certainly like the project. Um, it's more of a procedural, practical thing that I'm. Uh, looking at uh, and I want to make sure we do it right and Mal's not too concerned about a precedence, but uh. Um. That's just the way I'm looking at it. Uh, any additional cons- uh. Comments or do we have a motion?
I'd just like to clarify. I misspoke earlier. My edit would not be to B one, it would be to E one. B one looks fine.
And now, we've never done that before, Mal, uh changed a finding or added a finding. Um. Is that something we have the ability to do or is that just uh? How do we do that?
Yeah, um, so we 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 can't change the finding that's in the code. Uh, but when we make the finding, uh, there's, there's, there's no reason that we can't essentially put a caveat. Um, to the end of the finding, which I think is what is being proposed here. I I don't, I don't recall going back an hour exactly what was proposed. But it's essentially a caveat to E. Um, so if we can talk about that specific language. Um, then I can give you some guidance on to how exact or guidance regarding how exactly to do that.
Okay, um. Uh. Vice Chair Tyler, would you like to uh work with uh Mal just for a second and come up with the wording you're? Uh, you're thinking about?
Yeah, so to clarify, if you go to B one and two, I'm assuming B is the code and one and two are the. The language of the the planning staff adds that clarifies what's going on with with the code. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, so um E um is the finding. Um, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly. And harmonious development of the city in that. Um, and then. Um. We make, um, we made the statements uh below it, one and two, correct, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yeah.
So my edit would just be to not say that the whole project meets the development. Standard. And sort of mirror it like you guys did in B one and two, which clarifies that the garage is nonconforming. And sorry, this is like my nerdy planner coming out. Um, so. Cause I think it's not, I don't think we can say that it meets the standard of the zone and it goes on to say the setbacks.
Okay, so you're proposing that the language that we have in B one and B two, which alludes to the nonconformity. Okay, in B two, the proposed modifications of the garage structure improve the current nonconforming situation. Um, you would, you would basically transport that into E one need to to make clear. That the project meets development standards. Um, with the understanding that the garage is an existing legal nonconforming use. And will remain as such um through this project or something like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. No problem with that.
Do we have a condition in the conditions that talks about the garage shall be kept? Um, you know, free of storage and capable of parking. The design number of cars in it?
No, there is not a condition that specifies that, but that if that is something that the planning commission desires, it's certainly something that you can add to your motion and and add it to the resolution.
Okay, I mean, I think that would. I've seen that done in other cities and I think that that would, you know, start to alleviate some of the concerns. Um, I'd also like to point out that on the reduced driveway length of. Twelve feet or whatever, maybe it couldn't accommodate a car. It might accommodate a Mini Cooper. Certainly accommodate golf carts and motorcycles, so there is some benefit to that.
Mm hmm.
Um, if the. Commission's ready for a motion, I'd be happy to make it or report to anyone else.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to make one more comment if I could, Sheriff Crandall.
Commissioner Camp.
It's not just the garage. That's gonna be legally nonconforming, right? It's. There's other setback. Issues, so I don't think we should specify just. Just the garage.
Well, the, I I think uh maybe what um they've said is kind of true. The the house itself. Will remain legally nonconforming. They're not adding more nonconformance to it. Uh, the garage, on the other hand. Since in. My observation that it's being. Demolished and moved back uh eight feet. Um. Is in fact nonconforming. And I think they're really alluding to that rather than the main structure itself. Uh, Mal?
Yeah, if I can chime in, I I think Commissioner Camp makes a a really good point. Um, and I think the language, the language of subsection E, right, the findings under E. Um, the language should be revised to just allude to existing legal nonconformities, period, right? So. Um, the the project meets development standards of the zone, um, subject to existing legal nonconformities, right? That way you have the caveats that we understand that there are nonconformities that relate to setbacks, not only garage setbacks, but otherwise. That apply property wide. Other than that, we do comply with development standards. Technically. Um, if you're legal nonconforming, that's also a development standard, if you will, it's in the code, so we do comply with the code. But I think that's the way to skin that cap. And to apply it to both both aspects of the project, the garage and otherwise.
Okay, um. Has anybody taken down that uh? That additional uh verbiage for the um. Amendment to the conditions? Stephanie? That would be up to staff to uh include that, I believe, right?
Yes, yeah, so I was taking down some. Yes, yeah, so I was taking down some notes. If you would like me to read it back to you, I can, I'm happy to do that.
So both Tyler and McCann make sure that you're, we have exactly what they were requesting.
If I was to make a motion, I would, I would say with, you know, the conditions, condition revisions as discussed with Mal and to be crafted by Matt, precisely by Mal and staff. Um, I would, I would make a motion that we approve cultural heritage permit 20-378 at 1011 Buena Vista. With, uh, with the revised conditions to section E as previously discussed. And also with the added condition that the occupants, um, that the garages always be capable of parking uh, the number of vehicles that they were designed to accommodate.
Okay, before we do a, um, a second on that, uh, Mal, we haven't read the full resolution. For, uh, Cecilia's benefit, can, uh, Commissioner McCann read the full resolution? It's on attachment one, page eight.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I was looking at the agenda, excuse me.
And, um, also, uh, just a word, you know, it's always best whenever we put conditions of approval, but they are enforceable. You know, uh, but that's okay, Cecilia.
Here, Crandall, may I make a suggestion? Um, to Commissioner McCann's point about a condition that's enforceable related to, um, parking. Um, we have a condition that we utilized on other projects. And it says, um, each parking space area within garages shall be free from obstruction at all times to allow the parking of vehicles. How is that? It's a condition.
Like that.
So we can, um, possibly add that language in there in a condition of approval?
Okay, that sounds great. I'll remake my motion. I move that we approve resolution number PC 21-013. Uh, approving cultural heritage permit 20-378, a shabby addition. A request for a 570 square foot addition and remodel to a nonconforming multifamily residence. As well as a modification to an existing nonconforming detached garage structure within 300 feet of a historic structure on the coastal bluff at 1011 Buena Vista. I would propose, um, some revisions to the conditions with the garage parking revision as stated by Cecilia and with the revisions to the condition E as discussed by Vice Chair Tyler and Mel.
Uh, do we have a second? Motion by Commissioner McCann?
I second.
Uh, that was a second by Commissioner Prescott. Uh, we will take a vote. Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Tyler?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall, uh, is a no, um, based strictly on the process, not the project. So we pass, um, six to, oh, five, um, yeah, five to one. And one abstaining. Or do we have all seven? One, two, three, four, five, se- seven.
McCofflin's not here.
Yeah, we're missing one, so it would be, uh, five, one, zero. So, very good. Congratulations to the applicant for, um, their project and we now have, uh, let me get my agenda out here again. Uh, the next item is new business. Zoning lookup tool and ongoing city development web app demonstration by Kyle Weber.
Hello, good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, I'm going to give a quick demonstration and promise not to take too much of your time. I'm going to demonstrate two curated web apps that we believe the planning commissioners and public, if they're not already familiar, um, a demonstration of the app that we believe that would be interesting to review. So the apps were envisioned by the long-range planning team uh, in an effort to provide updated and detailed information on current planning projects in the city as well as development regulations and standards for all properties in general. Uh, so again, I am going to share my screen here. Can we see the, can we see this on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, uh, the first app I'll demonstrate is the property information zoning lookup tool. Uh, this app was a joint effort between long-range planning and the city's GIS specialist, Justin Mink. Uh, the app is designed to provide as much information as possible for any one property in regards to the existing development standards pertaining to the zoning code as well as the possible discretionary permits that might be necessary to complete potential projects on the property. So staff really likes this tool because it basically feeds information to the public that is normally in high demand, but the information is often regularly difficult to find as it's buried either in the zoning code or a specific or general plan. So I'll just jump into using the app real quick. So this is what the app looks like here at the top of the screen. Um, you can input an address, so we can do 117, just pick up random address. You can either type in an address here or you can literally click on the map on any parcel that you want to see the information. Um, so the web app first provides just very general information such as the assessed parcel number, the size of the lot, the year the existing building on the site was built. As well as, um, you see general land use zoning designations and overlays. But the app also provides more in-depth information as well. So if you're a property owner, for example, and you wish to know if your property exists in the coastal zone and it's, uh, possibly subject to a certain land use policies, if it's a discretionary project or in concept review, you can see if it is in the coastal zone or in the exclusion order. And so our goal is to provide information here to help, uh, members of the public or developers determine if the project would be excluded. So that's forthcoming to provide that information. So also, if you would like to know if your property is allowed to have short-term lodging units, um, it's very easy instead of looking on a separate map, we can see that it is allowed. And we also provide the number of units, uh, short-term lodging units that are allowed in the area. And so we show a max allowed and existing. So these are, this is information that we usually get questions from the public that we spend a lot of time looking up for them. So the idea is to provide this information easily in one app. Something else that's really nice is you can see that if you are subject to any regulations regarding historic resources, so it will tell you if you are abutting a historic resource or, um, usually a residential site, and if you'll be affected by requiring a minor cultural heritage permit. Which is, which we saw in our project today, that could be very useful for someone who's just beginning a project. Something else that's really useful about this app is that if you go to, to this property, we have historic resource right next to it. And so if you're looking at a historic resource on this app, you can look at all the information about the historic resource and, um, view some of the data and history on it. There is a link to the DPR form, which is a sheet that describes, uh, the historic property in more detail. And this is, this is planned to be accessible to the public to review this for the convenience. So, but what's really useful about this app is, um, and what is possibly the best part is that now we can view development standards for each lot. So such as required setbacks, height limitations, uh, maximum allowed lot coverage, allowed density and so forth. And so this is for each individual parcel in the city. This is particularly useful for developers or property owners who need this type of information quickly during the initial project planning phase or during conceptual, uh, design meetings with clients. So in fact, uh, this app is designed specifically for that reason. Planning staff has, um, a very difficult time keeping up with the number of requests from the public who are looking for this very general information, which is often, again, buried in the municipal code or relevant specific plan. And staff is confident that the app will be a huge help, not just to the public and developers, but also to planning staff and decision makers such as yourselves when reviewing projects. Um, so now the app is still in a working phase. And there are some kinks we're still working out, particularly to make it as user-friendly as possible. And the long-range planning, long-range planning team, um, we welcome any recommendations the commissioners may have as we continue to develop the app. It is not yet ready for, uh, the public, but it is, uh, will be ready soon. The next app I will show will only take a few minutes to demonstrate, but, uh, before I do, um, I would love to answer any questions the commissioners may have or comments and, or recommendations are welcome as well. Um, I did go through that kind of fast.
How do, how do we get into that app?
Yeah, so right now we don't have it open to the public. But, um, the idea is that it will be on the city website. And normally with the apps that we create, it's very easy to, um, search for these on Google. Um, for instance, the next app I'll show, you can literally type in, um, story map, San Clemente, it will be the first link. Sometimes these links are buried in the websites or they seem buried. Uh, there's a lot of information on our website, but right now we cannot, um, it's not available to the public, of course. If you want to view it before it's released, we could figure that out.
Yeah, I just want to say, Kyle, this is awesome. I don't think I've seen anything that has this much detail. When do you expect it'll be available? Any idea?
Yeah, so I really have to, um, give a shout out to our GIS specialist, Justin Mink. He's been helping with, uh, helping this with us a lot. And, um, we are still working out some, um, data crunching and making sure it runs smoothly. The goal is to make this, again, as user-friendly as possible and provide a lot of information, but not too much information. And so we don't really have a timeframe yet. I can't really guarantee anything. We're hoping by, um, we're hoping soon. Yeah, I don't really have a time. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. If not, the other app that I'll show real quick is our development story map. Um, this is something that we've had for about a year now, and in case, um, anyone from the public or the planning commissioners don't know, this is an app, um, it's a GIS story map that just shows the the more significant current planning projects that we have going on in the city. Right now we have, um, something around fifty or sixty projects that we have up here. And so this website shows, um, the projects that are currently under review, the ones that are approved, the ones that have been finalized, the ones that are currently being constructed. And, um, it's very simple. Um, you can scroll through the bottom and look at these projects. Um, the minor cultural heritage permit that we reviewed tonight, um, is possible that that is on here. Sometimes it depends on exactly what the project entails, but you can scroll through these and look at projects. Just real quick, the gallery is a good one. So you click on project, it brings you to the location, gives you a little bit of information and then you're available, uh, what's available is to look on the city website and gets, um, even more detailed information. So you can see a little bit about the dates of when, um, meetings are scheduled, but also the project planner and their contact information. And this is a website that we have that gets a lot of traffic and it is, is shown to be very useful to people. And that is, that is all I have for this item. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Kyle, can you take us like from the city's website straight into this app?
Um, sure, let's see here. So if I go to we go here, departments and services, we would need to go to planning. You know, uh, Commissioner, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Camp. This, oh, it's right here, development project map. So this is, so you'd have to go to the website, departments and services, go to planning services and then click on development project map here. Um, I often tell people that the easiest way to look for it again is going to Google and typing in story maps and Clemente and it's the first thing that shows up. That is the easiest way to help people find it.
And another shortcut is, um, Kyle, if you could just, um, go back to the main page so that this screen isn't highlighted. Yeah, okay. Um, and then on the right side of the screen, it says pay bill, recreation signup, co-compliance services. At the bottom is current projects. If you click on current projects, go ahead and click on that, Kyle. Um, online development map is going to be the, um, second item. If you click on that, it will bring up, um, yeah, go ahead and click on that, Kyle. It, it'll bring up the development story map. So that might be a cooker shortcut. So you can get to it from the main page under, um, current projects. The current projects, um, link will take you to Public Works Projects, the development story map and our wireless facilities.
Thank you, Cecilia. That's, that is a much faster way. Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Kyle?
That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much, and those are all useful tools. Um, let's see, we are still in, um, new business. So Cecilia, a request for you and your staff in their spare time um, about getting a definition for in-bank garages, what it is and, um, how it applies to the, uh, nonconforming, uh, section of the code. But mainly a definition and that'll make it, let's be able to be a little more, uh, consistent with its, uh, application.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Uh, does anyone else have any, um, comments for new business? I see none. Uh, old business, we have none. Reports of commissioners and staff, we've only got, uh, we've got a, um, coastal advisory committee member, any meetings in the near future on that? I see none. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? Um, it's on the last page, page four of our agenda. And I want to thank everybody for their patience tonight.
I will, uh, move adjournment to the next regular meeting of the study session and planning commission to be held on August 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via teleconference.
Motion by Commissioner Cosgrove, do we have a second? Nobody jumped in, I will go ahead and second it. Uh, so we have a motion by Cosgrove, second by Commissioner Crandall. Uh, we will take a, um, voice vote. Commissioner Cosgrove?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp? Commissioner Prescott?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is, um, aye also. So, uh, passes one, two, three, four, five, six, six, zero. So congratulations. Thank you for a good meeting and I appreciate you, uh, putting up with me on my little, uh, diversion there.